You're good.
We're good. Good evening. I'm calling to the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals to Order for Wednesday, December 18th, 2024. So tonight, we have two ZBA members in person and two more who are virtual, with the potential of having another one to have five. So our agenda this evening, we actually, we have 120 Turnpike on at 7:15. And then 250, for the, for the, that's the variance, right?
The variance.
The variance. And then at 7:30, we've got the 250. So what we're going to do is we're going to try to take care of the other administrative things that we have to do this evening, so that when we get there, we'll be, we'll be good to go. So.
We have Mike.
We have Mike.
Just trying to say hello.
Oh, very good. Okay, good. So the first item on the agenda is, actually, I'm sorry, other business, is approval of meeting minutes. So what we have for meeting minutes, we have that, that first one, sorry, Laura, you've got it open there.
Yeah.
What the date was, November?
November 13th.
And that was the planning board meeting where?
No, this was our meeting.
Okay, that was our meeting?
Yes.
But there was also minutes from a planning board meeting where I think Mike and Doris and I, or, or maybe Doug, I don't remember, but we had a quorum, so.
Yes.
We have minutes from that also to, to approve. So for the, for the first, if we take the, the planning board meeting minutes first, I'm going to say I had no problems with anything in the minutes.
Okay.
Doug, Mike, Doris, any, any concerns?
No, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us okay?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay. I see Mike shaking his head.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Okay, mo, uh, second, with a second from Doug? Okay. Paul's dialing in. Now, the big question, can Paul hear us?
I can hear you guys.
All right, Paul. No technical difficulties.
Hey, me.
Good stuff. So Paul.
I'm so advanced.
There you are. So, so Paul, we're, we're doing the administrative items first and we're.
Yep, I heard all that, yep.
Okay, good, good, okay. Did you have any, we, we, we did have a motion to approve the minutes as, for the planning board meeting as written and a second. Did you have any concerns with those minutes?
No concerns.
All right. So we have a motion with a second to approve the minutes as written for the planning board meeting. All in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Okay. The, the second set of minutes were, were much longer. That was the, that was the, the hearing where we actually closed the public hearing for 120 Turnpike Road. So it was, as you probably remember, pretty long, as I read through them, again, you know, I think very accurately captured what was said that night, all the discussion, so I had no objections to them. How about anybody else? Doug, Paul, Mike, or Doris, any concerns?
No objections from me.
No objections from me. I read through them. It was a very long meeting, they're summarized, but I think it accurately captures what we did at the meeting.
Yeah, I would agree.
So I only had one minor comment. Minor comment, page eight, last paragraph, third line, was one of my comments is, it just said, stated during the fall and winter, it's possible to see clear to the reservoir. I don't know if I said clear, so I just delete clear if possible.
You can still see clear, you can see to the reservoir, but I'm not just like, clear
is a very strong word.
You don't want that coming back to you later.
Yeah, no, just.
Okay. Okay. So, excuse me, that modification, no other objections. If nobody else has an objection, then we'll take a motion on it?
Motion to accept the meeting minutes from, those are from November, right?
November 13th.
Yep, November.
November 13th. The motion to accept the November 13 minutes is modified by Doug.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made to approve the November 13th minutes and with a second. All in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Okay, that takes care of the meeting minutes. So next, the other administrative item we had is the comprehensive permit regulations. So this is something I was just getting educated on by Laura before the meeting. What it is, is these are ZBA regulations, and they need to be basically in sync with the mass general laws and CMRs that they reference, and they're out of date. So they need to be cleaned up. I think, Laura, you've taken a look at them to see, she was mentioning that, you know, some, some CMRs have been combined since we last wrote the regulations or edited them. So it's not that we're, we're making a change into the process or the procedure, we're just cleaning up what the references are. So I think, excuse me, for tonight, it's really just, you know, an open discussion on the, those regulations. We need, we, I think what we're, the, the plan is, we'll, we'll want to have a meeting posted in January where we'll have edits to make, right? To the, those regulations. So if there should be any need for a public debate, we can do it, we can do it there. It's, it's hard to anticipate whether we get any public questions or not, because it really is, it, it sounds to me like it's, it's very procedural and just a matter of making sure you're referencing the correct part of state code. So. So it's a discussion item. Anybody have anything they want to bring up? Any concerns or questions?
I guess, are you drafting changes, or who's drafting the changes to make them comply?
Sure. So I took a first kind of glance at it and just a little run-through. And again, a lot of the stuff that I pulled out of it was just making sure that the CMRs are accurate, because 40B used to reference, I think it was like three or four different CMRs, and they combined them all into one. And just some other administrative updates. I have also talked to town council to see if he'd be willing to review it as well, to make sure that it is current and in line and appropriate. I do not want to be the last voice on that one. But just in doing some of the comprehensive permit applications, I noticed that they weren't inaccurate. So it's really just, I hate this term, but it's housekeeping stuff, just cleaning them up, simplifying, not changing the meat of the regulations or the expectations or the policies or the procedures, but just updating to current regulations.
Great. And you guys will provide a red line before the meeting?
Yes.
Awesome, great. I don't have any, I mean, we can get ahead of time and review it, great.
Right.
It's really housekeeping, it sounds pretty minor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mike, Doris, or Paul, any?
Comments?
Okay.
I have no comment.
I do not have any comments.
So.
Yeah, I, I'd look forward to the red line, I'll take a look at it then more deeply.
Okay. And, and also relative to that, I think we were talking just before the meeting about when we would meet in January, and Laura said Jamie has an issue with January 15th, so we're, we're thinking maybe January 22nd would be better to meet. I don't know if anybody else has a problem with that. But also, that would give, I think that should allow enough time for the red lines and, and for them to be, actually, as, as Doug requested, if we could have a, a look at them before the meeting would be great. We would have to have them, I would imagine, would, they'd be posted in the packet, so that the public has the ability to review them as well. So I don't, that, that's not really necessarily getting ahead of the, the administrative items on the agenda, but I think it does play into what we're talking about here, that hopefully by the 22nd, we'd be able to have a good review of that.
22nd works for me.
I'm okay with that date, if someone's asking. That date's fine with me to go off a week.
Okay. Mike and Paul?
Yep.
Sure, I have no idea what I'm doing next week, never mind next month.
Second, Paul's.
That's, that's an outstanding point, Paul. There's no way I can predict what I'm going to be doing in a month's time.
Tomorrow, shake it, I mean.
Yes, the 22nd sounds fine.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll just confirm with Jamie that that works.
Okay.
But we just need to be aware of it for the sake of the Mullins Rule, because Jamie, and I think possibly Doris and Paul, might all have missed a, a meeting for 250, so if we continue 250 tonight, I just want to make sure that we have all our players.
Right. Okay.
All right.
Okay. And what, so the other administrative item we have here is just upcoming meetings, so the next one would be January 22nd. What about anything beyond that, that, or it's hard to say?
Yeah, I mean, it should be relatively light in terms of agenda items. So if we can schedule the public hearing for the comprehensive permit regulations, it'll be that, and then potentially 250 Turnpike, the 40B.
Yep.
We don't have any regular applications for January, which is very nice.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What, what, what date do we have tentatively scheduled in February?
February is currently the 12th.
Okay.
And we currently have two, I've received two applications so far for that.
Oh, okay. All right. Oh, that's 25. All right.
And just as an administrative note, I am taking time off next week, so if you need something, it will likely be the week after.
Okay. Duly noted. All right, I've got 7:13.
Laura, one tiny thing, Laura, do you think it's worth for our next meeting to mention that we applied, or I reviewed, didn't I, that grant application, because they were asking for, for ZBA input?
Sure.
Or, Leah, is it Leah?
Yes.
Leah had asked me to look at that grant application, I gave some feedback. Leah wrote me about the grant to help analyze our dated zoning.
Sure.
On Route 9.
Yeah. Is that okay with you, David, if we add just a brief update on that?
Just a brief update.
Okay.
I got something back from her today, that, you know, I did give some feedback on that, that they're going to incorporate. I have to read what she sent me.
Okay.
This afternoon, so, okay, I'm finished.
All right, you got less than a minute.
I thought we might have to take a brief recess, but I don't see it necessary.
Yeah.
No, let's keep following through, come on. Keep going.
We just got to start the next thing at 7:15, so, like 10 seconds.
Okay.
Okay.
There you go, you got it.
According to my phone, we've got 7:15. Okay. So for, at 7:15, we have 100, 120 Turnpike Road. Good evening. The, what, this is a, this is a variance, right?
It's a request to modify a.
Request to modify a variance. So you want to read the public?
Sure. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing at the McCallum Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 7 o'clock PM, with regard to the petition of FD 120 Turnpike LLC, 120 Turnpike Road, South Row Mass, map 37, Lot 120-4. The petitioner is seeking a modification to a 2024 variance decision to permit 344 parking spaces. The property is located in the Business Highway Zoning District. Relief is requested under Section 174-12E13 and Section 174-10, and I want to apologize for my typo between the public hearing notice and the agenda on the timing, so.
No problem.
Sorry about that.
Do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Good evening, board members. My name is George Bonon, I'm Assistant General Counsel for Ferris Development Group, and with me is Brian Charville, General Counsel of Ferris Development Group and Chief Operating Officer. On behalf of the applicant FD 120 Turnpike, we are seeking a modification to a variance decision this board had issued on October 15th. The variance decision was regarding parking at 120 Turnpike. The board had allowed or, or, and/or approved 344 spaces for Lot 4A, proposed Lot 4A, on the condition that the lots 4A and 4B were approved as presented at the October 8th public hearing. There have been, there has been a slight change to those plans. A recirculating sand filter has been relocated, resulting in a change of lot lines, a minor change. The applicant has submitted a new set of parking plans reflecting the new lot lines, and we seek a modification to the variance decision reflecting the plans recently submitted with this application dated November 8th.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and so, just to be clear, you're still at 344?
Correct. There's been no change to the amount of parking, there are still 344 spots on Lot 4A.
Okay. Do you have anything we could take a look at just to, to show? Because it sounds like it's just, the plans are, there's slight changes there. I, I took a quick look through, and I said, you know what, I'm going to let you guys just guide me towards what's.
Correct, Laura, I believe you can pull up the new parking plan dated November 8th.
Okay. I believe this is the new one. I have the original too, if you want to, we can flip back and forth.
If, if the board would like for their reference, you can do that.
Okay.
And I'll point to the change on the, the older parking plans, or are these the new ones, Laura? Yes, they are.
Yeah.
This is the new parking plan. It might be better if you start with the older parking plan, just so I can show where the recirculating sand filter is. And then if you could go to the third sheet? Oh, uh.
Sorry.
One more, perhaps?
I am off my game today.
Oh, no, you're fine.
All right, let's see.
Maybe one more sheet then. Sheet S3.
Have all the Zoom things are in the way. There we go. Is that us?
Yes, if we could just scroll down a bit?
Yep.
Board members, you'll see that on this sheet, on the bottom half of it, if you can make it out to the right of the wetlands exactly, thank you, Mr. Mans, that is where the recirculating sand filter was originally proposed, and the lot lines were drawn around it. If, Laura, if we could turn to the new parking plan? And I think the next sheet, S3, for the new parking plan, please. Correct. You'll see now, if we can even scroll down a little further to the bottom of the page, just so it's clear, the recirculating sand filter has been moved to the left, it is now in the southwest corner of the lot, and the lot, lot lines have been changed to reflect that relocation.
And you'll recall from your consideration of the 40B application for this property, that it was at the suggestion of the board's wetlands peer reviewer, that the sand filter was brought outside the wetlands buffer.
Right. I do remember that, yeah. It was 100, 100 foot? Yeah.
Yes.
So that's where it is in the comprehensive permit?
Correct.
Is this just updating it to match?
Yes.
And no change in the acreage of the 6.2 acres going to the town? That same acreage?
Correct. That remains the same as it was when the comprehensive permit was approved.
So what, is that to say that whatever was basically removed from the right-hand side here of, of this area is relocated to the left?
Yes.
Okay.
And these changes to Lot 4C and B affected 4A, hence the need to modify the parking variance.
Right. Okay.
But same number of spaces again?
Same number of spaces, yep.
And more just out of curiosity, the acreage, did it change substantially between 4A and 4B? More just?
I don't have that information on hand, but I would, I would say no, it did not change substantially.
That's on the.
Yeah, if we toggle between.
Yeah, actually, so, yeah, just out of curiosity. It doesn't matter, I was just curious. Yeah, 10.78, now 10.74, and now it's 3.55, and if you go back.
Is there also a change to the lot lineup here?
There is, actually, yes. There's a slight change, thank you, Laura, there is a slight change to the lot line in between the office building and the proposed 40B building, and we made that change to accommodate setbacks.
Okay, yeah. I know, yeah, that was, that was an area that was focused on.
Correct. It functionally did not change anything, the same amount of parking spots are still there.
Right. And, and, I mean, the location of the parking spots has not changed at all.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
But, and again, this, so this is, this is aligning what you have for plans here with what we have in the comprehensive permit, is that correct?
Correct, yes. The, this parking plan was engineered off of the approved comprehensive permit plan.
Okay. All right. Okay. Mike, any, any questions?
No, I have no questions on this, it's pretty straightforward.
Uh, Doris?
I don't have any questions.
Paul?
No comments, seems straightforward, yes.
And Doug, you're also?
No comments.
I think we've asked what we need to. Go ahead. Just, just a quick reminder, like, this can only be related to the, the request tonight, correct?
Right. Paul Carter, 6 Hillside Avenue. Main question is, how does this, this plan, the moving of the sand filters and the location of the drainage ditch and grading adjacent to the proposed septic system? I know you guys submitted a, an easement plan most recently. Trying to think, I, I, does that easement plan agree with this parking plan, or does that easement plan show the recirculating sand filter adjacent to the septic system? You know what I mean?
Are you, are you just talking about a particular page of the, of the plans?
Yeah, if you can call up the parking plan, if that's not too much trouble. Yeah, on, on the wetland and then the, the drainage ditch on the side, I know you guys submitted an easement plan, and I don't recall, I don't think that the easement plan have the recirculated sand filter moved over to the west property line, or not yet? Is that something that needs to be changed?
Through the chair, I hesitate to speak to that, because the easement plan, I believe Mr. Carter's referencing, was provided as a courtesy to town council last week, going into the board's hearing on the 40B decision.
I'm just, I'm just running out, I'll see you in a little bit, okay?
And so I, I hesitate to speak to something that's not sort of in the record, especially on what's before the board tonight.
Uh, it is, it is on the record. So the.
I'm just trying to clarify, because you don't have a difference between the two plans.
Oh, so if the easement plan shows.
Yeah.
The new location of the, of the sand filter, correct? Is that accurate?
I'll pull up the easement plan to be sure.
Yeah.
David, I'm not sure if this is helpful, but they do need to submit a final easement plan within 60 days of filing the comprehensive permit decision, and that easement plan will be peer reviewed to ensure that it's compliant, so.
Okay. That helps. So I think we can just note that concern for the peer review.
Well, it's just something, the easement plan is very germane to the decision, because that's the very major concerns in terms of grading and drainage, and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I'm looking at the easement plan that was submitted to town council in advance of the board's meeting on December 11th, and it shows the recirculating sand filter in the same location as the parking plan that the board is looking at tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody online raising a hand?
I have two people in the attendees and no hands raised.
Okay. All right. Having no further discussion, I think we all felt like this is pretty straightforward. We, I think we'd first have to consider a motion to close the public meeting.
Make a motion to close the public meeting? Or hearing?
Second.
All right. Motion to close the public hearing has been made and seconded. All in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Again, I, I don't, it does seem pretty straightforward. I think the, the concern noted regarding the easement plan can, can certainly be passed along to the peer reviewer. Applicant is saying it's already there, so that seems pretty straightforward to me. I will take a motion on approving the, get this right, it's the variance.
Yeah, so you can take a motion to grant the modification to the notice of decision of an application for a variance dated October 15th, 2024.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve the request has been made and seconded. All in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Okay, so that addresses that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we can see time-wise, I don't know.
Too efficient.
We are being too efficient, we have three, oh, we have two minutes now. Next item on the agenda is 250, we'll just give it a two-minute timer here.
We got two minutes?
Two minutes, Mike.
Plenty of time, Mike.
Right.
Yeah, don't go too far.
Yeah. Yeah. Why don't, why don't I say that? We're, we're going to take a two-minute recess, we'll be back at 7:30. Thank you. And we have.
Hold on.
Hold on. Oh, I gotta wait. We good? Okay. All right, we're back 7:30 and our, the, the hearing for, for 7:30 is 250 Turnpike Road. Again, we have our applicant here.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Brian Charville, General Counsel for Ferris Development Group, along with my colleague George Bonan, Assistant General Counsel. And we represent the applicant on this comprehensive permit, which is FD 250 Turnpike LLC. And by way of brief update, our plan for tonight's meeting is that this be just a continuance, continuance of the public hearing to a date of the board's choosing in January, whatever works for you all, mainly in the interest of the Mullen rule. But the brief update is that we did, I think approaching Thanksgiving, just before Thanksgiving, filed a complete plan set for the 40B, along with septic plans, drainage and stormwater plans. This plan set is the one that we have been talking about for a few months that reflects an approach of 32 townhomes rather than one large apartment house building with all the units together. And so we're really pleased that this 32 townhome plan responds to feedback we've gotten from the butters and neighbors and others over the course of the process so far. We thank the board for having got this new plan set out to the peer reviewers so quickly. And we understand from your staff that the peer reviewers are well into it, but that their review is not yet complete. And so it sort of makes sense for everybody, the board and applicant, that we just pick this up again in January without any further discussion tonight.
Okay. And, and the, the, the date discussed previously in the meeting, January 22nd, that doesn't present any concerns?
I don't believe so, but I'll triple check. That works for me.
Works for me as well. So the, the only item left to discuss then is when we last talked about 250, we said, okay, we'll continue to December 18th, but then we've really got to talk about extending the date.
Understood.
So do you have a, a, a date in mind that we could push that out to?
Given that we'll be jumping into the peer review feedback on January 22nd, I think it's more than safe for us now to extend to March 31st.
March 31st?
Minimum.
Okay. I think that, I mean, I think that's fine. I mean, based on all my experience with 40B, which is with you, extend to March, March 31st. 25, okay.
What's the current date?
I think the current date is January 31st.
Yes. All right, great. Thanks.
So, so I think that, I think you're right. If, if they're in peer review now, say the expectation is by January 22nd, we, we actually can talk about something substantial there.
Definitely.
So I think that, that's reasonable to me. I would hope that would be reasonable to Mr. Talman. We gave him the night off. Any, any concerns from anybody else? Paul, Doris, or Mike?
I have no concerns, no.
Okay.
No, no concerns. We'll pick it up on the 22nd.
I think we voted, if we voted to extend this in the past or no? It's there.
You've voted on the continuance.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay. Yeah, so we do have a hand up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll take it. Is it, is it somebody that begins with Dave or no?
Mr. Palmer.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Palmer.
Yes, hi. John Palmer, 131 Parkerville Road. I am a direct to butter to 250 Turnpike Road. And first and foremost, I'd like to say I do like the revised site plan representing a townhouse home concept versus the, the four-story apartment building concept. So I'm very much in favor of, of the revised plan representing a townhouse concept. I did do a comprehensive review of the site plans that were listed on the ZBA's website, comprehensive and thorough review. And I sent a letter in to you, David, outlining my findings and my concerns regarding that, that set of site plans. And what I would respectfully ask is that my, my detailed findings and concerns be submitted as part of the public record and that they be considered as part of the permitting process, whatever that entails, whether it's the, you know, considered as part of the, the peer review or just as part of these public hearings.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that. Thank you very much, Mr. Palmer. And I will take a look at, at those concerns, but I don't see a problem in submitting those as being part of what we, or, or discussing them at a, at a future hearing. Based on where we are, I would say that I don't think it makes a lot of sense to go into detail this evening. But I appreciate, I appreciate the input.
Yes, I'll look for an opportunity at a future meeting to, to speak to those specific concerns as appropriate.
Okay. Thank you for your patience.
Yes, Paul Carter, Six Hillside Avenue. Quick question. Are there affordable housing units for this 40B, like the 120 Turnpike 40B? Does this 40B include affordable housing units like the 40B for 120?
Correct, it does.
It does?
Yeah.
How many units was that roughly?
I don't remember the, what you had.
Eight.
Eight, eight units.
Great, thank you.
And they're rental, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No other hands up? Okay. All right. So we need a motion to extend our, our deadline to close the, the hearing on 1, on 250 Turnpike Road to March 31, 2025.
You got to vote on the continuance, not the extension.
Uh, okay.
You need it to January 22nd.
To contin, oh, 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 oh.
And you guys will give me a letter?
I will draft.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing until January 22nd?
Second.
Okay, with a second. All right. Motion has been made to continue the public hearing to January 22nd, 2025 with a second. All in favor respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Thank you. So we will meet again on January 22nd and we'll get something from you about the extension.
Yes, tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. And that is all we've got. The administrative items, we've already taken care of. Paul is connected tonight without any technical difficulties, so I think we know.
You never know.
I think we know what to do, Paul.
Is it my turn to shine?
It is your turn to shine.
Oh, boy. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All in favor respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Thank you very much. That adjourns our meeting. Have a good evening.